All right, the time now is seven o'clock and I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen Regular Meeting, September fifth, two thousand twenty-three to order. Uh, first order of business is approval of minutes from the August first meeting. Um, I didn't see any issues with it. I thought it was great. Uh, can I get a motion to approve those?
Me neither. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the August meeting.
Perfect. Thank you, Russ.
A second.
Perfect. Um, I also like, oh, I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, approved. Um, we also, it did not go on the agenda. Uh, thank you Julie for catching it. I'd like to add something to the agenda, which is the minutes from the special meeting of August twenty-first. You can look it over if you'd like. I have a copy of it. It seems fine.
I'll make a motion at the minutes from the, uh, special meeting of August twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you, Russ.
A second.
Thank you, Kim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so now, um, I'd like to look for a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting for August twenty-first.
I can make a motion, but I'll wait if you want. Okay.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Um, okay, onto the next order of business. Um, public comment. I just want to say for the record, the public comment portion of the meeting is an opportunity for residents to express opinions on any town-related topic. This is a reminder that the public comment is not a public hearing, meaning that it's not an opportunity to discuss items with the Board of Selectmen. We are here to listen. Only during this segment, you can always contact us by email or phone outside of the meeting times. Individuals will have two minutes to speak. After two minutes, we'll go to the next person or close the public comment portion of the agenda. All right. Do we have any comments from the public? Yes, Meredith.
So, Meredith, how does Hodge Park was recently closed off on what appeared to be the warning of public catch? Based on two statements below that I'll be reading, I have a couple of questions that I hope that can be answered tonight on the agenda. Did the Public Health Director contact you, Patrick, to close the park? Respectfully, based on your prior responses, there was no authority that you had to do so. Your statement was that it's incorrect statement. We would not have any say in the park's fate, open or closed, or any other decision unless the town leased the property. I'm a board of the map on the other edits of FOIA requests having compiled, Patrick. Joe, as planned, the Board of Selectmen will be discussing Hodge Park again at our next regular meeting in September. Reminder that this is the normal process as we cannot discuss or make decisions as a board outside of our meetings, Patrick. Based on those two statements, one of two things have appeared to happen. One, you closed the park without the authority of the other selectmen and without the proper lease agreement. Or two, you were directed by Donna, the Newtown Public Health Department, when she has the authority to close the park off. I hope these questions can be answered. We've been emailing and fore-requesting these answers and it's... Um, I think the public's knowledge to why the park was closed off and who put the order in, was it the selectmen that decided? Or was it Donna from Newtown? And those questions have been asked besides bringing up a public comment. We've been emailing. And I think hopefully tonight it comes on the agenda that we could get the answers.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Joe.
So, if there's still a lot of partners on the agenda, for the record, my name is Joe, I'm on the Secretary. I would, I would love to see the Board of Selectmen tonight discuss in its entirety, uh, the meeting that took place, between the first elected, the Department of Transportation, Department of Public Health, and the Department of Public Works, and all of the options that were discussed that we were retiring so that, you know, the order in for the people viewing at home could have a better understanding of what those options are. So whatever decisions are made, everything, tonight or the future, that we all have transparency as to what those options are.
Thank you. Need a comment? Okay. All right, we'll move back to the next order of business and we will be covering Hodge Park a little bit later in the meeting. Um, all right, next is Tax Collector's Report. Uh, this actually has nine items, uh, just because of the time of year it is. Um, there were two lease returns, a couple prorated, some overpayments. Um, the biggest one was paid twice for four hundred and twenty-two dollars. The total looking for request for refunds of property taxes is seven hundred twenty-four dollars and forty-five cents. And I'd like to have a motion to, uh, process these refunds.
So who?
Thank you, Russ.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, next, Board of Selectmen Commissions and Board Appointments Other. Um, we did have a resignation, uh, from Inland Wetlands from Julie.
Okay.
Um, and she, she did submit the letter, so, um, I know there's a recommendation and I'm looking for a nomination for Mark Zerby to join Inland Wetlands Commission Alternate Vacancy, uh, which would expire, uh, August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven.
Oh, sweet.
Yep, I make a motion to, uh, recommend Mark Zerby as an alternate for Inland Wetlands Vacancy expiring eight thirty-one, twenty-twenty-seven.
And I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We move forward. Congratulations, Marcus. Thank you.
What a matter of fact.
No, I know you're abstaining. We, I actually wrote down abstained, so I have another record. I agree, he's great in the community. He's helped out in a lot of organizations. I think he's gonna be an asset to your, to your commission, so looking forward to that. Um, okay, first order of business, Roxbury Volunteer Ambulance. Um, I just wanted to give you guys an update because last, uh, we, last meeting, uh, we were met with the, uh, ambulance, the, the Development Commission, or Committee that they had put together for this. Um, we were going to go out to bid. There's still quite a few answers, uh, that we need, so they're meeting with an architect this week. I was hoping to have some more answers for you, um, but once we get those answered, we can formally put a bid out to, um, get some quotes for that. But at this point, we just don't have enough information, so that'll be continued for the next month. Um, next order of business was on, uh, the rumble strips. We had a public forum, um, now a week and a half ago, uh, Thursday. Uh, we, I called for that meeting with the, uh, Department of Transportation. Um, I thought it was good. Uh, I know, Kim, you were on it. Do you have any feedback from it?
Yeah, it was, um, I thought it was, uh, very informative. Uh, there were a lot of good questions from the public, you know, that it was all on chat, so they could write, you know, write in and respond. There were several people who said, is this just a formality? Are you gonna ram this through the town regardless of what we do? Pretty much the gist of it. And by the end of it, I was feeling kind of, uh, down, going, this, this may be just something that they think they're going to do. And I am not in favor of the rumble strips anywhere in town. And so, you know, I, as a planner, I've already started thinking about all these alternative, um, options or, um, compromises and, uh, but I don't really wanna go there yet.
Okay, I, I don't either. I, I think you were, you, were you on the forum?
No.
Okay, that's good. Um, I mean, I, I've had several residents reach out, you know, really expressing their concerns. Um, I know the feedback that we got from Weller's Bridge, uh, and how there was just an outrage and, you know, it does change their quality of life. You hear it.
Yeah.
You hear when people go over there. I don't think it's appropriate. Um, we are still in the two.
They wanted it.
Who does?
The people on Weller's Bridge wanted it.
At one time.
No, not, not the rumble strips. That came about, that was a mistake.
Uh, that's right.
That was, that was, no, 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 the speed bumps we did, it just so happened that it was all part of that same time, so.
The same time, yeah.
The speed bump discussion brought up a lot of this and then people realized, uh, how loud it was and how it does affect their life. I mean, you hear it all night long. You can't shut it off. Um, and I, I mean, I'd like to address that down the road, but the, the matter at hand is, is sixty-seven and, uh, you know, we, we do live in a beautiful community, um, and people come here for the peace. I know sixty-seven is a, a fast road. Um, I'd actually put together a bunch of facts on it, um, that I'm gonna be discussing with Rob Smith once the two-week feedback period is over. We're still in that, so I'm still encouraging people to, uh, you know, give their feedback when they're input in because that's, their, their voice needs to be heard.
People don't do it. They're gonna say, well, no.
Correct. We had, um, we had thirty-two people in attendance, um, and I also have met with Eric Fell and Cindy Harrison, um, and actually composed the letter today, uh, you know.
And they are our representatives.
They are our representative. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. We all know, but they, people are listening, they may not know.
As I was asked, Cindy was great, so I, she said, put together a letter for me of, of, you know, what your feedback is and I will make sure that it gets escalated, um, on her level. So she's been a great assistance on several different things. So I met with her, uh, and again, also with, uh, Eric. You know, I think we have the opportunity, you know, the reason why we called for this is because there is an option to do that. So I wouldn't want to dishearten people to think that, you know, the public forum was just for show.
Right.
Um, we have to really ensure that people's voices are being heard and, and that's, once this, uh, feedback ends, you know, we'll have another, another meeting and, and go over some of what hopefully they've collected, um, and hopefully that's good.
Yeah.
So, uh, we continue to work on that. Um, it's still on my radar and, you know, for the record, I just don't think it's appropriate for our town.
Yeah.
You know, seeing the head-on accidents. Actually, just, so you guys know.
Right.
Um, what I did, um, is I took six years of accidents that we had. So in two thousand twenty-three, we've had three collisions, two unrelated to the center line and one crossover, which was snow-covered roadway. Two thousand twenty-two, we had eight collision, seven unrelated to center line, one crossover admitted he fell asleep. Two thousand twenty-one, there were thirteen collisions, ten unrelated to center, center line. There were three crossovers in twenty-one. One was a, um, was distracted, uh, which was a minor accident. There was another minor accident where speed was the factor. And, uh, the last one unfortunately was a fatal and that was an intoxication.
And so were, was this all in that stretch?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Uh, two thousand twenty, there were eight collisions.
Which structure we're talking about?
We're talking from three seventeen to the border.
So where is Southberry?
Okay.
Just that.
Route sixty-seven?
Route sixty-seven.
Yeah.
Border of South.
Yeah.
Yeah, just that.
Southberry Road all the way down to the border.
Not by the other, not by.
Uh, two thousand twenty-eight collision, seven unrelated. Uh, the, there was, uh, one that was serious. He, it was a crossover. He fell asleep. So it's like one a year. I mean, if you take off the ice, the nineteen, there was one crossover, uh, ice-covered road. Um, two thousand eighteen, uh, there were two crossovers, one operator fatigue and one three-plus inches of snow and snow is what, snow was it?
Yeah, and those wouldn't have done, that would, rumble strips wouldn't have helped.
No, um, when you're talking about ice or snow, I mean, that's, that's more getting out there and, and communicating with the state to make sure that they're not waiting too long, especially if it's in the morning or, you know, where, where ice has a tendency to, uh, form and become an issue.
Right.
Um, but I think, I haven't heard any, you know, out of the feedback that I've received, uh, there has been nobody that's in support of it. The only feedback I've heard, and of course people are gonna, you know, that wanna hear, that their voices be heard, they're gonna complain more than they give support, um, and they're concerned about this, um, but I wanna stand behind our people and, you know, until I have somebody that thinks it's a good idea, it's, all the feedback I'm getting is, we don't wanna destroy our town.
Right.
So, so that's where that is.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Um, I'll continue to, I'll have another update for you, uh, next month, once we have the feedback. Uh, we still have some time. It's not even gonna be for another year and a half before that would even be considered, so there's still time to talk about it.
Okay.
Um, okay, so next, uh, we went out to bids. So I have several that I'd like to discuss and approve. Um, the first one was Town Bridge Wakeley. Um, this is a rebuild, uh, this is Wakeley over Battle Swamp. Um, we only received one bid on this, uh, Dwayne Mur- Murray Masonry Right From Town. Um, this is a little bit more complicated than other bridges because in this one, um, the concrete arch is rusted out. It's rusted out on one side. Um, it's really because of the salt and, and the, and what we use on the road itself. Uh, you know, when I've looked at bridges that are on dirt roads, they're in great condition. When I look at anything that's on a paved road, they're rusty. So on this one, it's just destroying the galvanization, uh, and rusting it out. So this one, we're gonna cut back the steel and actually put a new footing on as well as repointing the whole thing, taking apart and replacing any stones that are lost. This went to bid. So the bid came back, uh, Dwayne Murray at seventy-two-five. Uh, our budget was for seventy. We're really in the ballpark, which is about right.
Yeah.
Um, so I'd like to get a motion to approve and move forward with Wakeley Road.
I make a motion to approve the bid for Wakeley Road.
Okay.
I'll second.
Thank you, Russ. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect. Um, okay, then I'll go to tennis courts next. So tennis courts, we had four bids. Um, Sport Tech Construction at three hundred and seventy thousand, uh, Hindy Tennis LLC at three hundred and eighty-eight.
Three hundred and eighty-eight?
Eight, yep, three hundred and eighty-eight. RS Sight &amp; Sports LLC, two hundred and eighty-nine, and Classic Turf Company LLC at two forty-five. Um, this is for a concrete post-tension court, um, and the fencing, the appropriate fencing, new fencing that will go around, so black chain-link fence. Um, I did do the reference checks. I checked with Region Twelve, Region Fourteen, and, uh, Washington's Montessori School all had work done by, uh, Classic Turf. Um, and they seem, they seem very good and everyone was happy. I didn't get any negative comments from them, um, just 'cause I wanted to follow up on it.
And they are the low bid.
They are the low bid at two hundred and forty-five thousand.
And this is, this had gone out again. This is the one that had gone out for a second time.
Yep, yep. So we're at a much better price point, so, uh, I, I would definitely say that the bidding worked, uh, on that one. So I'd like to get a motion to approve or to move forward with that. Um, I will say that, uh, there may be some options involved. Um, it's an acrylic coating that we have on that. I've gotten a couple of comments from people that play on the tennis court. They like that spongy kind of, and I've heard that.
Yeah.
Now, that's on asphalt, not on concrete. So if we do decide to, uh, go with, uh, you know, move ahead with Classic Turf, I would get more information on that and also bring it to you because if there was gonna be any add-on, I would make sure that the Board's approval of it, uh, is approving of it. Um, so I'd like to move forward on Classic Turf LLC with the tennis court replacement.
I'll make a motion to move forward with Classic Turf LLC on the tennis.
Thank you, Russ.
There's a low bid and they have a good reputation.
All right.
A second.
Perfect. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Um, okay, so the next one was the, uh, fuel tank, uh, removal and installation.
Down at the town garage.
Down at the town garage. Um, we got two bids on this. SRS Petroleum Services, this is for a concrete tank, as well as Metro Environmental Services. Um, SRS was at three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, Metro was at two eighty-one. SRS, uh, included a, uh, concrete convault system.
Is that like what's at Washington?
That, this is Washington. That was a picture that I took of Washington.
That's why I was like.
And I literally brought that out because I was like, okay, just so you guys know what we're talking about, I mentioned somebody else and they said, what does a concrete tank look like? That's what a concrete tank looks like. Um, Metro Environmental Services came back at two eighty-one. Um, when I looked at it, um, they're including a steel tank, also six thousand gallon. Um, it's a split, so we'll have four thousand of diesel and two thousand of, uh, regular fuel, of unleaded fuel. Um, this is repurposing the tank that we have now for fuel to move towards heating oil because we're removing that tank out of the ground. I wasn't really sure about the, uh, steel tank, so, uh, over the weekend, I was thinking, well, what's the warranty? And I looked through these and I couldn't find anything on warranties, so I did find out that the concrete tank has a twenty-year warranty and the steel tank has a one-year warranty.
What?
I found that out today.
Usually it's thirty years.
One-year warranty and I.
Man, that's.
Honestly can't move forward. It's frightening.
Bid this?
I don't know why it's so frustrating.
All right, so.
We can go out to bid again.
What was, what was our budget? What were we thinking it was gonna come?
We were around the two hundred thousand. I had gotten a price last year from United Concrete of one eighty-eight. They have not bid. I mean, I could go back out to bid, so that's where we came up for the budget standpoint of a, of a two hundred thousand dollar budget.
I don't know.
I mean, I could possibly go back out to bid again. Um, I, I wish more people would bid. Um, I know that I got a referral, but a no-bid came through. Um, and I, and I know.
It's a busy time right now, this time of year.
Yep.
Just because everyone's trying to get their, the work done before they can't.
Especially things that require paving.
Yep.
They're, they're going.
I know, I know, and hopefully with the fall, they're starting to slow down.
It sounds, it sounds high to me, too high.
Me too.
And I would wanna retain the low bidder, but I don't like the one-year warranty.
Me either.
Yeah.
That's game-changing.
Yeah.
In my eyes.
I'd like more information on those who have, have decided on the, I think so too.
Okay.
And in, in that, just to get more info on, uh, what has happened to tanks after the year? The stainless steel. Like what is the real longevity of that?
Okay. That's very valid.
Yeah.
Perfect. Okay. Okay, so.
Do we then, um, make a motion to reject the bids or, oh, okay. Okay, I'll make a motion to reject the bids for, uh, the underground storage stack. And put it out to bid again?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We can do that. Um, I would also probably say specifically, let's just change it to a concrete system, to a concrete holding system as opposed to steel. Let's just take that off the table, 'cause I think it's, I think, you know.
We have a thing on the table. We're rejecting the bid and.
Correct.
Right.
To rebid, yes.
Second?
Yes.
Of second.
Perfect. All in favor?
Now we can have a discussion if you wanna.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, yeah, we go to discussion.
Follow.
Yeah, you're right. You're right. You're right. Um, I, I mean, I was thoroughly disappointed. I mean, it seemed like a good option, uh, with the steel. I mean, it looks impressive. Uh, I went through all of the information that they have.
Yeah.
Um, I was just thoroughly disappointed because I could not find anything on warranties in any of the bids that they had done.
Yeah, and that's not.
And I wouldn't wanna put the town in jeopardy of.
It'd be one year. The steel lasts. I have a STIP three steel tank in the ground in my house. I have a thirty-year warranty.
That's a steel tank in the ground that's thirty years.
Right.
It didn't make sense to me.
Maybe something changed. I don't know.
Yeah, in terms of material.
Or, or no, I think maybe insurance companies. I don't know.
High-line tanks has a thirty-year warranty under. Jack Healy just installed one for the P W. You might be able to jump after. He's got a thousand gallons of steel. Very nice.
But I'll get my, I'll talk to my subs.
Okay.
And we get their input of why it's so high.
Okay, then I will leave that on the table and we could keep steel. I, you know, again, this is due to me.
More information.
Um, I'm going by what the bid that came in is the only information I can go with.
Right.
Can't produce any more other information, so that's what they told me today, so I just wanted to make sure that I passed it along. I think it's valid that, that's one year is concerning, so.
Absolutely.
Again, I don't have the opportunity to research it, but I think we should continue looking, so.
Yes.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Then we'll do that. Um, okay, so Hodge Park is next. Um, I do wanna say that, um, I, I did make the decision, uh, to close, uh, Hodge Park. Um, that day, uh, we had gotten some, you know, pictures showing the abuse of the park. Um, and I wanted to give the Board a chance to make that decision and preserve and protect the po- the, the, the park that's being abused.
What kind of abuse?
People showing up, all kinds of cars, people cooking, bringing grills. Um, there's no, it's the same exact stuff that's going on. It's over abuse of the park and they're destroying it. There's no bathrooms there, we know.
Keep calling on the park.
It's a wayside.
Okay, it's a wayside. Okay.
Correct.
Grill.
Right. Correct.
It's a waste.
Because of that, um, I did make the decision. I had, uh, actually emailed everyone that was in the conversation to, uh, let them know that that's what I was going to be doing.
Who was that was?
Yes, uh, this was to, uh, yourself, uh, Russ, Ron Ferris of the, of C, of DOT, um, as well as Public Works and, uh, Patrick Emerson of DOT in New Milford, uh, who would be responsible for this area. Um, for the record, I've been reaching out to Ronald Ferris, who was, uh, at that meeting. Uh, we had a conversation after the last meeting and I invited him to come to this meeting. He said, no problem. He said either his, him or his boss would be here. Um, I've sent several emails. You guys were CC'd on it. Um, I've left several messages and, uh, I cannot get any response back. I wanted him to be able to speak to, uh, what the state's role in this and what options are. I still have a lot more questions of how this would be maintained, um, because I think that we do have to protect the natural resource. Uh, additionally, I had a call with, uh, Matt Devine of DEEP. He is the Bureau of Natural, Natural Resources Fisheries Division. Um, they do stock that area with approximately seven hundred fish every spring. Um, he's somewhat new to his role and he is planning an evaluation of the area, uh, because things changed with some of the fish. Um, he also was concerned about any pollutants, uh, in the area and how we would maintain that. Uh, he did say that it's a, a kind of a problem everywhere, um, especially during weekends of the summer. But I didn't wanna see more abuse and by putting the rocks there, I was trying to limit the amount of cars. Um, I did get, uh, the only feedback that I got after I let everybody know, go ahead.
Oh, so I'm sorry. So the email that you sent to those people, what did that say?
Um,
You, you just said you, you made the decision to close.
Yeah, that I made that decision.
Okay, okay.
Uh, basically that I made the decision to close it and that had, in no way reflects what our, our decision would mean at the Bor- as a Board.
Right, you really didn't close it.
No, I'm just limiting access to the cars. You can still walk in, you can still get in and out.
Right.
Correct, correct, correct.
Took the picnic table out of there that the town put there.
Right.
It was, and actually when.
Conrad?
Yeah, I don't know, but this was a fellow.
So when we picked it up, it, there's been repairs. They were literally broken. They were literally broken and awful anyway. Um, like when we picked it up, like two of the boards came off. I mean, they were, they were awful anyway, so we kinda moved it. Um, and it was trying to limit people from spending all day there. It's a wayside. People do go there and I see it often, like at lunchtime, somebody pulling over and having a sandwich by the river or whatever. I mean, it's a beautiful, tranquil place.
I saw people fishing the other day and it kinda, okay, at least you can still walk down there and fish.
When people show up with grills and canopies and they camp out there for hours, that's, that's more concerning because you know, we all know there's no bathrooms there either, so. Um, the only, uh, feedback that I got was from Donna. Uh, her comment was that this is a, a challenging situation with a few moving parts. I appreciate this action being taken to mitigate the evolving unacceptable overuse of, uh, Hodge Park. Uh, please know that I'm glad to help in any way as this conversation continues. She actually asked, uh, if we needed her here tonight. I had said that wasn't really necessary 'cause she came to the last meeting.
Right.
I, I was hoping that, uh, Ron would come here so we could ask him questions, 'cause for me, you know, I, I, I wanna know if, if, if the town can have some, you know, any kind of input in this, because during our conversation on, on, uh, August seventh, it was basically like the town has no say. Um, but I think, think we have a, an interest in the shapog and with fisheries, there's a lot of mute moving parts and a lot of people need to be in this conversation.
Right.
Um,
Well, basically the state's saying us, after us take care of it, Conrad used to do it voluntarily.
Right.
And he did a great job. I didn't really agree with what he was doing, but it was his pet. So it's the state's property. It's the state's responsibility. It's not our responsibility. We don't own it.
Mm-hmm.
And the state, instead of doing its job, is basically giving us an ultimatum that, we're not gonna take care of it. If you wanna take care of it, you're gonna pay us a lease, seventy-five bucks, and then you can do our jobs for us, basically is what they're saying. Because otherwise, we're gonna put guardrails up and, and we're just gonna.
He said that was an option. Um, you know, it's, it's, it's in my conversation notes because he said it. Um, and again, it would be nice if he was here so he could speak to his own words. Um, you know, I don't think he was thinking in fact of the fisheries. You know, and I got it handed to Margaret Minor. Um, you know, she's like, well, what about the fish? What about this?
Yeah, no.
So she, she jumped right in there and.
Right.
Um, that's where we made this, uh, this connection to, uh, Matt Devine.
So, I think we need to get our state reps involved because I think DOT has no right, no right at all. They forget they work for the people of Connecticut. Somewhere in DOT, that's gone away, 'cause I've seen it all over in projects I'm working on.
Right.
They do what they want. They don't care whether, even, uh, meeting up in Norfolk about salt and wells, um, DOT was boom. And when they got the state rep involved, the attitude changed. I think they need to be reminded that they're paid for by the taxpayer. This isn't our problem. This is not our problem. Now, our people, people from Roxbury don't really go there, that I know. There are people who use it. I personally think to shut it off is just wrong. People need, you know, and the abuse that's going on is easy to stop, but we can't stop it. We have no authority. Now, admittedly, I thought all these years with Barbara negotiating with the state and the state said, you guys could take care of it and you got the authority to do whatever you want. Somewhere along the line, that changed. Some lawyer must have gotten involved.
I, I got the authority from DOT last year. It wasn't until our conversation with Ferris was the first time. Granted, we found out information that none of it was property, but as soon as he heard that when we had that meeting, he said, well, then that's when we took down the signs. We don't have any right to it unless we lease it. And that's where I was bringing that.
I think that this has been going on all over the state in different parks or waysides. And because during COVID, people needed somewhere to go and all of a sudden this blossomed. I mean, it was never this big, you know.
But that's.
Now, I know, I understand, but now they've had to come up with some sort of plan. And so there sounds like their their mitigation has changed, meaning now they're saying the town has to lease it and then take out liability insurance so that they are no longer having to deal with it.
Donna's suggestion of putting a porta potty and everything else. I mean, there's a lot, there's a whole lot.
I think that's disgusting and the state reps need to be involved and the governor should be involved.
Did you talk to?
I talked to Cindy and Eric both about this.
So then what's their feeling?
The ball's kind of in our court. I would like, I was, like I said, I was hoping to get somebody from, you know, representative from, from DOT to talk to us about this and go over what the plan is. Obviously, I've been shunned or, you know, whatever, but I think that's unacceptable to say. It's unacceptable that I've sent all these letters. I got nothing back.
That's totally unacceptable.
And I gave it.
The town should not sit down on that.
Even till today, it's very irritating.
They're going to say, we'll put the guardrails up and that's it. People are still going to use it.
Yep.
And we're going to get stuck with, we can't do anything. Our hands are tied.
Correct.
We can't allow that to happen. Now, I'd say, close the thing. We don't own it. Close it, but people are still going to go.
Absolutely.
I'm opposed to having towns lease state property that the state's responsible for. It's the dog, the tail wagging the dog.
We had the same thing from DOT. I've been trying to get the corner by Century Hill on sixty-seven open. And there was a member of the DOT that said, well, you can go in there if you want to and cut away the mountain to increase the, the visibility, the sightline. I said, absolutely not, because then we're liable if something happens. And it's easy for the state to just pass it off to the town, to take all the responsibility and they can just blame it on the town. I just don't think that's right.
Yeah.
Well, then we got to go around DOT. We can use emails. They've shunned us.
Not, I, I don't know why. I thought we had a good relationship and I, it's not to beat anybody down. It's to find out more information. Let's clarify what they meant.
If we can just say, we don't know what's happening at the end. So.
I don't.
Okay, so before we just throw them under the bus, let's just, okay, can we, all right, but I know, but.
If I did that, I'd be fired, okay?
I know, but we are human, so let's just make sure we said that we don't know what's taking place in a personal person's life. Can we just?
I get a little passionate because people in private industry don't get away with that kind of stuff. And it's not just DOT, D P. They're all, and you have to call them out.
Yep.
Or they're going to continue not doing their job because it's okay. You're saying it's okay that they don't do their job. If the state wants to close it, okay, close it, but then manage that.
Right.
Don't put the management on us. And by them telling us you need to get insurance and you could run it, that's going to cost us money. Who's using it? People from all over the place. It's the state's responsibility. Bottom line.
I am not in favor, I think we figured this out, I am not in favor of leasing the property. I am not in favor of leasing the property.
Not at all. That's, that's a.
What I would like to know, I mean, you know, that's, nothing's going to change my mind on that. I mean, I just think that's a real problem. But I would like to feel like we had some kind of say or can offer suggestions of what can happen. Like, you know, I mean, you put the rocks there and I'm really glad I drove by it. There was one vehicle sitting there. I mean, granted, it's during the week. I think people have been in, but not so many, you know, to use it.
Well, they can't fill up the whole area with cars and which it's been, that's where the abuse has come from. We already had.
Can't we ask our state cop to go there on holidays?
We do, and I have, and I have, if I see something, I send them up. I, I didn't get any complaints on Labor Day. Okay, so it was.
I mean, the state could put up guardrails and then. And then just support us by having the cop there on days we know.
But the police officer is not going to sit there all day, but they, if they can go and just say, you know, but, but what's the rule? You know, what, what is the rule? There is no.
Again, the state's putting it on us. We are making up the rules.
So if people are in there.
No grilling. You can have, bring a sandwich.
I know what.
Go fishing, no tents.
But that's not stated. It doesn't say that they can't. So they can.
So we're in between a lock and a horse.
So do you feel that we should go farther with DOT and keep this conversation going and see if we can get somebody here?
Go over DOT's head.
Okay.
Because obviously they don't care about them, the people of Connecticut, or you wouldn't be talking about shutting down a roadside because you don't want to send somebody there once a week to clean it up.
Agreed.
And I'd be okay if they said, okay, the town can take care of it. You have the authority to kick people out of there. Make your own rules, but don't tell me about a lease and insurance. It's your land. You're, they're already insured. Who are they kidding?
Agreed.
All right, so what do we want to do?
I think you got to go to your state reps.
Okay.
And, and I'm going to put in a complaint to Governor Lamont.
Okay, let's do this.
And see if, he's a good man.
Yeah.
Who cares?
Yes.
And I'm just going to tell them our problem and his, the guy who runs the DOT is a great guy. I forget his name. He's a great guy. I've met him at many selectmen, you know, like.
Yep.
At Cost, he spoke.
Yep.
Really knows his stuff. He's a straight shooter and I think if he knew this was going on, he'd be pretty upset.
Okay, okay.
He's fair. He may tell us, look.
Yeah, there's nothing.
We're shutting it off.
Right, right.
Okay.
Yeah.
At least.
Kind of first, I respect.
I mean, but then again, let's be honest. I mean, you still got fisheries involved.
Right.
I, I don't know that that's going to be an option.
How's that affect fisheries?
They have to have access.
Because they.
They have to stock, right? Yeah, that's how they stock it. And there's only a few places on that, like the shiapog, that they can actually stock it. They do.
Put a gate up.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, we can't do anything unless we lease it, which is, again, we're, we're caught in the middle here that we have no say or unless we take basically ownership and responsibility of it.
Yeah.
It's a difficult situation and without cooperation from DOT that makes it difficult.
Yes.
Well, that's why the state senators and state reps.
Hmm.
Yeah.
When, when, when the, when the regulator, when the regulators aren't doing their jobs, you have to get them as our reps to have a sit down with DOT and our representatives. But I think I could get somebody in Governor Lamont's office.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
So I'll do that part.
Okay.
That's great.
Do you want to?
I'll get the head of DOT. Absolutely.
Okay.
Like I've said, I've been talking with them about this. They're very well aware of the situation.
Like, I don't want the part the way it has been.
I agree.
That's wrong.
Right.
But I don't want to shut the river down from the public.
I think that's what's, you know, been said before. You've said it. I've said, we've all said that we don't really want it closed, but we.
We can't have it abused and that's where we are now.
Yeah.
And if there was a gate or something, that would be ideal. Then the fire department could have access. I mean, they, I've already talked to the fire department. They would be able to pump it no matter where. They're, they don't need to get right up to it. They're fine. So that didn't, that didn't have an issue with there, but I wanted to make sure that all our bases were covered because there's a lot of interest in this water.
So should we just keep this on the agenda again?
I think we should. I think we should.
We don't have any say.
I understand.
Just as concerned. I agree. I'm just as concerned, honestly, honestly.
And she's still not right from it. So please, can we stop playing politics and put help, our residents' help because it's my daughter that was sick?
My, my suggestion is this, Ron Ferris is a very, is a very nice man. I, I agree that it's, it's an awkward situation. You don't want to shut it off, but people, people are abusing it to the point where they're delegating in the river and it's becoming a public health issue.
So, I'm sorry.
So I don't want to interrupt your meeting.
Yes.
But I appreciate it.
Yeah, get it. Yeah.
Okay, this can, conversation, and I appreciate the passion of the board and the passion of everybody because we're all, we are concerned, honestly.
So, you know, and it's important for people to understand that even when we, you know, if we made a vote on this to not do the lease and it's still, nothing's going to change unless the state does something.
Correct.
Nothing's going to change.
So we will escalate this and I will table that till next month. Okay, next on the agenda, FOIA request complaints.
So I asked for this to be.
Well, I get some glue. Why you got to break stuff, Russ? It snaps on. I don't know. Take a different chair.
All right, it needs some glue.
It does need glue. I, I'm gonna fix it. I'll put it on my list of. I know.
I, I asked for this to be on the agenda because I think that FOIA requesting complaints that have come in are primarily in twenty twenty-three, but it's a fairly new phenomenon for the town of Roxbury. And, you know, for the record, people have a right to, anyone has the right to request documentation, public record. And that's not why I'm bringing it up. But I think most people don't realize that there's a budgetary component to this, to the request and complaints. And I, I think it's important for this board to understand how much money is spent on this. I don't, because I don't know the answer. What line item is it from? How do the expenses break down in the various categories that I have to assume exist? And I, I don't know the figures and I think we should know.
I agree. What line item does it come?
I have no clue.
Right now, it's coming out of legal fees and then any work would just be normal labor of hours, putting paperwork together and things like that. So.
Doesn't the person requesting have to pay?
With copies, you can charge, you know, we, we were charging twenty-five cents a page. You can go up to fifty cents per page. You are allowed to bring in a personal scanner for twenty dollars or you can view them for free. The work basically has to be done because in order to come up with a price of how many copies it would be, we need to know how many. So in many cases, this will be months of documentation and information that has to be compiled. So there's the labor hours aspect of it, but everything goes through our legal team. So our, and I would not have the information on me for how much that would be, but I could figure it out. I could find out.
So what, so I have a list of.
Go ahead.
Julie, I'll give you a copy for the minutes, make it easy, but and I see two reasons to research this. And one, are we budgeting enough money for this? And do we need to raise dollar amount allocated for the topic? What line item? And the second is, what can we do to minimize people's need to ask? You know, are we providing enough information to the public at the time of our meetings? We might be, and there may be information or motivations by people we can't anticipate or placate. I, I don't know the answer to that. But in that case, that there's nothing we can do but continue with business as usual. But I think it's important discussion that we can have at some point. We don't have to have it today. But those are two things that I was thinking about. And I, I wanted to know, just for the record, Patrick, since you're the one that deals with these and receives most of them, what's the difference between a FOIA request and a FOIA complaint?
Well, anybody can request anything. Freedom of information allows it. Any public information, any public documents, anything that we do basically in our role here is public information. You can, you can request it.
Okay.
There are also complaints to the, to the FOIA commission.
The state of Connecticut?
Connecticut. If there is a complaint against us.
Okay.
To my knowledge, there are three pending.
Okay. And so what happens there? That just goes to?
We go to a hearing. So we do, we would have legal representation there as well. So we are paying for that. So that does act as a line item.
It's a necessary.
It is.
You just, we're just going to have to deal with it.
Well, again, I just want to make sure.
From a budgetary component, I can see what you're asking to make sure that we have enough in the line to cover that.
Because that line item was never high.
Never know.
I know.
I mean, this year's going to be terrible.
Yeah.
It's going to be ten times more.
Because of other things, you know, ports of commission.
Not because of F O I. That's, it's because of all the other.
There's, yeah.
But we can separate it out.
Yeah, and there's, there's, you know, there's multiple areas that FOIA requests are coming from.
And, you know, I'm just asking to know this information before the next budget cycle comes out. And I'm not looking for next month or, you know, it's really, you know.
We should separate it off.
We should separate it out.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's important.
Otherwise.
Yeah.
You know, and that just.
Report card.
Right. I just think it's important, you know, that may just bring up some other questions too about what, how things are separated or brought together.
Actually, just so you guys know, the increase in our legal fees line this year was an increase in rate from our lawyers, not.
Oh, not an increase.
Time.
In time, right.
So we were budgeted the same amount of time.
Getting some big builds.
We are. I haven't, we haven't been built in a couple of months. That, it goes in this cyclical cycle. So again, I'm not going to be able to answer that question. The last, we're still trying to close out the year of legal fees from last year.
So should I, I have certain things that I'm looking for. Do you just, do you actually read it out or do I?
It's up to you if you want to read it out or not. You can add it to the record. We can add it to the minutes if you'd like to.
Okay, I think that's easier.
Email us also.
Okay.
If you can include all of us, that way I can start finding out some of the information.
Okay, would that be easier?
Unless there's any questions, I can answer from that.
No, that's easier, I think, if you just have it all together.
Okay. I think it's a valid point. Thank you for bringing it up.
Yeah.
Okay, appreciate it. Thanks. Okay, next on the agenda, I just wanted to give an update on July sixteenth storm. About fifty percent of the roads are complete. We have actually run out of pipe and have more pipe on order. Over half of Grassy Hill is now complete. So the whole upper side, all the way down to the big culvert, which it's installed. The large culvert on Bacon Road was also installed. The other smaller pipes that go down Bacon Road and the lower section of Grassy that ties into Bacon Road still remain to be done. We're taking this opportunity to catch up on grading. Mowing has fallen by the wayside over the last month and it's really bothering me. So we're just going to take a little hiatus while we're waiting for the pipe.
Yeah, I saw them like going out.
Catch up on mowing. Let's catch up on grading. These roads are unsafe.
My question is this, because I'm seeing us go back. When they grade, they need a guy to walk behind that grader and get the big rocks off the road and they stopped doing that.
That, that is Corey and Todd. They work as a team. So they're, yes, they're, Corey right now is bringing a lot of fill. So he's running dump trucks back and forth where they're not spending specific time, but what, there's big gouges in it because of the big rocks when they're grading?
No, I'm saying after you create these big boulders come up.
Oh, okay.
Always had guys walk behind, just getting them off the road. Go up Garnet Road right now. That's some big rocks I missed. I had to move out of the way because they can't be left.
That's a good, good one.
Okay.
The second thing is, when we have ditches created during a storm, we shouldn't just be filling them back in with dirt. We're, we should, I know that there's emergencies and you got to just get whatever fill you could get, get it in. But in certain cases, we really should think about putting a pipe in there and putting gravel in the ditch.
Like we did with, like we did with Grassy Hill.
Right, or, or it's just going to get washed out another year.
Well, the problem with that though, you know, we do have, yes, but that's got to be planned so that we have that in the budget too. Because the pipe that came from, we took it from.
We took it from the Bacon Road project.
Bacon Road project and put it into Grassy Hill. So then now we have to spend the money.
Buying more.
To buy more.
I agree. I always complained that we didn't budget dirt roads.
Plan, yeah.
Barbara always said, there's a dirt road budget. Yeah. Barbara always said, there's a dirt road budget. Yeah, for all dirt roads.
And it's just processed, basically. It's not including.
I wanted to see projects.
Yeah.
So last year, the reason why we already knew what to do is I consulted with Doug DeVesta last year about Grassy Hill because it was a known problem. Obviously, it was so known that it got washed out badly. So, you know, we're not gonna put that together and if there was a bigger, I mean, I know there's some old Roxbury, there's some room in Booth. You know, where you have these huge hills and these gullies developed. We could start looking at more of a comprehensive plan to put culverts in and drain it where necessary, you know, new basins and.
Right, but after a storm, we'd have a ditch. All I'm saying is you'd be filling it with big rock, bigger rock.
Okay.
You know, inch, inch and a half, rather than just dirt.
Dirt, oh, yeah.
Cause your dark water wants to go there and you're just blocking there and, and when it happens again, same thing happens. And I, we've gotten better at it over the years, but we used to do that all the time. It made no sense to me. Just instead of ordering process, order gravel.
Yep.
It has to be bigger than just, you know.
Yep.
What you put on your driveway or that'll go to.
Right.
But Garnet Road is a perfect example where we should have backfilled with rock and not.
So it won't wash out to the big building like it was. Oh, it's, it's a lot of work. There's so much more work on dirt roads than there are on paved roads. The easy option is to pave it. We're not gonna do that. You know, there's scenic designation. People love their dirt roads and we're gonna keep them that way. We're gonna, I gotta keep them safe. To your point, number one, um, but I'd like to talk about long-term. Fixes for known problems. Obviously, the way our climate is, this is not, this is gonna keep happening.
That's what I can say.
We like to think it or not, it's, we gotta be planned for fifty years, fifty-year storms instead of twenty-year storms.
I always ask the town crew, what is the roads you keep going back to?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Because they know better than I.
Absolutely.
And Grassy Hill was one of them. We knew.
Oh, yeah.
Four years ago, we knew we need to put it in the budget to do Grassy Hill and it never happened.
And I will say, the feedback of the residents on Grassy Hill are, thank you, thank you.
Well, they've been asking for ten years.
Absolutely, absolutely. I know a couple of names that are, they, they told me that and so they're, they're happy to see this done.
I'd like to build a. Discussion with those guys. And then, and I, I'll work with you, Kim, to come up with a list.
Oh, sure.
That then when budget time comes, this, this is the list.
I'd like to.
Has to be.
I'd love to do that too. I, I have no problem with, let's correct it once and for all, or at least. We wouldn't have to do these major repairs every time.
The list has to be reasonable. You can't do three million pounds.
No, 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 we, but we can strategically do it. It's no, no different than the list of bridges that. We got because all the bridges were built in the thirties and forties and now we have to replace them all now. Because they're all really at the end of their lifespan. You know, and now that we're starting to get some of those accomplished, we can start adding. I'd like to put more in a chip ceiling budget. I'd like to do a lot more repairs and things. No different than we're doing Grassy Hill. I mean, I was like, it was great that we could start right away because we already knew what the design was. We already had a plan and that was consultation with Doug DeVesta. He's been a great partner where I can call him up and say, what do you think about this? What do you think about this? Uh, and he's been great for it, so I'd like to do, keep doing that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's, let's have that conversation, uh, at the budget talks. Make sure you hold my feet to the fire. We've got, got a, a list and let's start to develop that now so we know going into budget.
Right, exactly. I was gonna say that.
Totally agree.
A meeting with the three of us and maybe we got.
And honestly, I bet you Public Works is gonna be more than happy. They're gonna be very happy that they don't have to keep doing the, these major fixes, you know, they're gonna enjoy doing it.
Now, Church Street is not ours, it's the state's, but I'll tell you, cause I know people have been complaining about the flooding through.
Yeah.
But they don't understand, it's number one, it is a flood zone. And there's a reason for that. Flood zones are well thought out. They don't, somebody doesn't take a map, put colors there. It's all about elevation.
Yep.
And in that case, there's a high groundwater thing.
Right.
So everybody thinks the streams flood. It's not. The groundwater comes above there. I mean, look at George S. Pond.
I know.
It goes up and down with groundwater and during floods. And all that, all those lawns are flooded. We call it the town green.
Yes.
Um, it's flooded because of groundwater and.
Right.
No drain is fixed for that.
No, there's nowhere.
Well, that being said, that being.
Anything could be engineered.
I know, I know.
But it would be massive.
Yes.
So I do have a meeting, um, I made contact with, uh, Kevin Cody, Co- Codely. Um, he's the chief of the Army Corps of Engineers for Connecticut and Rhode Island.
Okay.
I just wanna bring it up to him. I also mentioned this to Cindy and Eric, our representatives, um, to just. Get an idea. I hear that there's, you know, ways that they can have grant funding for it. I wanna understand what our role is as a town and if the Army Corps of Engineers can help at least take a look at it and see where we go.
Okay.
Um, it's because I've had an outpouring of residents to say something needs to be done. Um, one of the biggest things is now the river is half the depth that it used to be. It's barely anything because of all the build that's come down.
Yes.
So there is structural change to the riverbed.
Right.
You know, make no mistake, there's, it's, the composition has changed. So I wanna ask the question. I wanna see what they have to say and I'll report on that next week.
No, no.
Um, so I have a meeting next month. I have a meeting with him, uh, actually tomorrow.
Okay, great.
Um, so I'll let you know. And we were kinda playing phone tag for a little while there as well.
Okay.
Um, so, yeah, so we can get, uh, probably about another week of, uh, mowing and, and more road work and then we're gonna be back to put more culverts in. As soon as we have a product and we'll finish up, uh, Bacon, Bacon Road after that. To that line, uh, budget capital expenses, uh, right now, Minor Bridge is underway. Um, they are making great progress. If you wanna go down and, uh, take a look at it, it's a giant hole. Size of the rocks that they're pulling out from there are just massive. Um, just these insane rocks. I, I, I don't know how they built it in the first place, nineteen forty's.
Backfilled with huge boulders.
Ginormous boulders, um, but they're, they're, uh, actually.
Seventy years.
They're gonna, they're gonna be almost to their level.
Yeah, it would have held up another thirty more, but.
It was very deep. It was buried. I know, I know. So, well, we, we got the grant funding for it, so, uh, there. Right now, tentatively, and I have not put this out, uh, real publicly, um, they will be done by November second. They continue to assure me, I'm down there every day to talk to Anthony, who's, uh, one of the brothers.
Yeah, you did.
Just running that.
You did the knock on wood, just.
That's why I did that, cause I, I, we don't know, that's why I don't wanna put it out publicly because if I did, then people are gonna say, you said November second. So I am, but that's the tentative date, that's the tentative date and let's do a little bit of praying. Um, so we're, we're set to, uh, finish that as a two-month project, which will be great. And then, uh, mostly the other projects, we're kinda holding off on. I mean, there's some little, little things here and there, but. Uh, I think getting our roads back to, to safe is most important right now for Public Works to focus on. Oh, okay, and then, uh, Fire Marshal and Resident Trooper report. Janet's report starts out, um, and I just wanted to say this, uh, I just wanna start by thanking the town of Roxbury and the staff. For be so, being so supporting during the passing of Janet's husband. Uh, the kind words, the flowers, the patience mean so much to me and my family. Thank you. Uh, also, uh, the other staff office, Jason and Brian were very supportive with coverage, uh, over the last several months and. And she really appreciated their support as well. Um, so just, I, I know it's been a tough time for Janet and, uh, it's nice to know that, you know, she recognized it as well.
Yeah.
Um, I didn't wanna put too much pressure on her. Right now, she's working on the new vet clinic, uh, they're all under review, um, they have oxygen and propane tanks and some other things. Um, she also. On Baker Road.
Okay, so.
The Roxbury, uh, Animal Clinic, they're working on that expansion. Um, and then we had an issue with, uh, Senior Center, uh, propane tank being overfilled. Um, she was here, DEEP was called to assist, uh, we basically had to empty out the fuel, replaced the gauge, had the whole system tested, so we're back online now. Which is good. The what?
Car charger? Oh, is there?
Oh, that's at the library.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, and they do actually.
I've seen them in there.
So, when I got in, when I got into office, they couldn't read the screen.
Right.
So we already had that fixed. I had that fixed, so now you can.
When I heard the car, something with a credit card.
It was, and it, you couldn't see the screen, so you couldn't really use it.
Oh, okay.
It was like a blanked out screen, um, so it was actually like fifteen hundred dollars that I had to send this thing off and then we had to reinstall it. And actually, Mike Foreman was able to put it together, uh, through their tutorial, so we didn't have to pay an extra seven hundred dollars for somebody to come put it in.
And so people are using it. Who's paying the electric bill?
They pay it.
They pay.
They pay.
That's what.
That's what the credit cards. Yeah, yeah.
Seem to remember, I was a, Barbara wanted to do it free initially.
Yeah, that's in the beginning before.
Times don't.
The way electric costs right now, it's pretty concerning. I know my bill jumped up last month, but it's, it's a lot of money. Electric is not.
I mean, this is gonna become more and more and people will get used to the fact that they're, you know, they can, it's like paying for gas, you know.
Um, and then the Resident Trooper report. Uh, six criminal, non-criminal investigations conducted, conducted for accidents investigated. Eight infractions, four written warnings, uh, for motor vehicle offenses and two hundred and fourteen miscellaneous, uh, requests for service. There have been some, uh, areas I was having them focus, um, on South Street and Minor Bridge prior to, uh, the bridge construction.